Noon we go into closed session, the city council to discuss strategy about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Make a motion when you go into closed session, the city council discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
There's three of them, so you all could get a second here today.
We're taking turns, Bob.
We need a motion to go into closed session, city council discuss strategy and matters relating to employment conditions of employees of the city not covered by a collective bargaining agreement and employees covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
We went in reverse alphabetical order.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
See, we know how to share here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 Could we stand for the silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation today for Todd Claussen.
This is quite an honor.
Thank you.
Have you seen this?
I have not.
Oh, you haven't even seen it yet?
I have not.
Well, take a look at it. It's very nice. I don't know if you'd seen it in broad as us or your work presenting.
I think they're male material.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Carnegie Medal is given throughout the United States and Canada to recognize outstanding acts of selfless heroism performed in the United States and Canada. The Carnegie Hero Award Commission awards a Carnegie Medal to those who risked their lives in an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. And whereas Todd D. Claussen is awarded the Carnegie Medal by the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission in recognition of his civilian heroism risking his life to save another. Whereas Todd is recognized for helping to rescue Cassidy J. Wana and a two-month-old from a burning vehicle on June 9, 2015, while with Jamison Barter. Cassidy's great-aunt Rebecca L. Stouton, who later passed away, and another relative, Gabrielle G. Wana, were also rescued from the burning vehicle. Now therefore I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend Todd D. Claussen for his bravery and heroism.
Thank you.
Thank you for your bid.
Thank you.
Sure. Come on, will you come out?
Yes.
You guys want to come around here?
Thank you.
Sam, do yours.
It'll be very great.
Thank you, guys. Very, very humbled. I appreciate it. Definitely appreciate you welcoming my family and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here. Could we stand for the silent period followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation today for Todd Claussen.
This is quite an honor.
Thank you.
You seen this?
I have not.
Oh, you haven't even seen it yet?
I have not.
Well, take a look at it. I don't know if you'd seen it in broad as us or your work presenting.
I think they're male material.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the Carnegie Medal is given throughout the United States and Canada to recognize outstanding acts of selfless heroism performed in the United States and Canada, the Carnegie Hero Award Commission awards a Carnegie Medal to those who risked their lives in an extraordinary degree while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. And whereas Todd D. Claussen is awarded the Carnegie Medal by the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission in recognition of his civilian heroism risking his life to save another. Whereas Todd is recognized for helping to rescue Cassidy J. Juana and a two-month-old from a burning vehicle on June 9, 2015, while with Jamison Barter. Cassidy's great aunt Rebecca L. Stouton, who later passed away, and another relative, Gabrielle G. Juana, were also rescued from the burning vehicle. Now therefore I, Robbery Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby commend Todd D. Claussen for his bravery and heroism.
Thank you.
Thank you for your bid.
It'll be very great.
Thank you, guys. Very, very humbled. I appreciate it. Definitely appreciate you welcoming my family, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Very good. We will go on to interviews by the council, and I need a cheat sheet because I don't have it, but I know that first up is Douglas Waples. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to join the City Council.
Doug Waples, 3255 Dearborn Boulevard. I've been a citizen in Sioux City for over 45 years. I was involved in management at two different businesses here in Sioux City for over 30 years. I'm a veteran of the United States Army, and I'm retired now, so I feel I have the time and could serve.
Questions?
Yeah. I have a question. My first question is, if you were appointed, would you consider running again for office?
Can't say. I haven't made that decision.
Okay, so if we appointed you for, let's say, two months, and we have to do a special election, you'd have to go through that, and if you won, then you'd, or even if you didn't, you'd, if you want to be on City Council, how interested are you? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, I was interested enough to probably be the first one to fill the application out, and I've attended the last year here in the last two and a half years, so I guess that shows interest. You know, I mean, I don't know how else to answer it.
Okay.
Other questions?
Doug, what would you hope to accomplish by being a member of the City Council?
I think we need to have more control of the projects that are going on with the city money in an attempt to get them done on time. I got interested after the Hamilton Bridge project didn't get done on time, and when that article come out in the paper. And that was October 25, 2013.
Are there any other city projects you're aware of?
Yeah, the one by my house.
The lobby besides that one?
You know, is the other one. And then, and then the Steuben Street project that they did when I worked at an oil dealership on Steuben Street. It pretty much followed us up for the entire summer when they put all the utilities in in the new street.
How long ago was that?
It was in the 2000s somewhere, eight, five, six, eight, or something like that.
Question, Dan?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maria Runquist.
Good afternoon. Pardon me, I'm just recovering from angitis, but I'll be clear with my voice. Maria Runquist, 31, 31 Norman Drive. A self-employed, retired from my business, a Spanish instructor, retired from my instructions. I've been in the city since 1992, when we moved back from Fairbanks, Alaska, to join the family, Runquist and Sioux City. I raised my children here, went to public schools, and they all grown up with children. I am very interested in this vacancy because I will provide leadership skills, trustworthiness, honesty, and accountability in our local community. I have been involved in many volunteer positions in the local level, state, and federal. I have included my volunteer work in my application. I will foster confidence, trust, and will welcome all new citizens to that quality to come and live and play in Sioux City. I will ask all of you for this opportunity to serve as an appointee, to learn the budget process, work as a team with the City Council and City staff, and I'm planning to run for City Council in the next city election of 2017. As you see in my application, I'm very persistent. I have run many times for City Council. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah. What makes the City Council different from all the other runs that you've had?
I have known my community very well, served in the city commissions and boards, and I plan to stay in Sioux City. I don't plan to move. I will stay and serve my community.
Maria, I'd ask you the same question that I asked Doug, and that would be, what would you hope to accomplish by being a member of the City Council?
Well, the city has a strategic planning, and I will be helping you all with the plans that we set up every, I have ability to bring people back together in this community and work with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Craig Berenstein. Tell us a little bit why you want to serve.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Berenstein. The main reason that I want to serve is that I have been a council member and former mayor of the city from 2000 to 2007. When I didn't run for a third term, it wasn't because I didn't want a third term, or because I didn't want the responsibility, but it was because I had children that were at ages where I didn't want to be gone regularly from my house. And when I didn't run for a third term, I always knew in my heart and in my mind that when the right opportunity presented itself, that I would seek another term on the City Council, and I believe this is that right opportunity.
Okay, so my question's gonna be the same that I asked the last two. Are you interested in running after, if we appointed you, would you be interested in running next year?
Yes.
Okay. And, and also, if you weren't appointed, would be, I'm sure we'll have to have another election. Are you interested in running for two months?
Yes.
From the appointment?
Yes.
And what do you think Sioux City is doing that we should change?
I think the city is doing a great job. When I look at a community, and in particular a city council and city government, I believe that we're in the service business. I think we need to provide a community that provides basic core services. I think we need to improve our quality of life. I think we need to provide for various amenities. I think economic development is, is key, and I think safety and security of our community are important. From those perspectives, I think that the council, and I think your staff, is doing a wonderful job of making progress in our community. And I've been able to, in the years that I've been out, which is approximately nine years now, I've stayed active in the community with the Chamber and with other organizations, and I've observed the activities of the City Council, the County Board of Supervisors, and certainly our Chamber to know what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. Do we make the right decisions all of the time? No. But I think you've done a nice job of progressing the community, and I think we've been very fortunate with some of the economic development opportunities that we've had, and we've watched that in a number of different aspects, including the residential components of our community.
Very good. Along the same lines as the applicants before you, Craig, what would you hope to accomplish? Any specific goals?
I don't have a particular agenda. The reasons that I ran in 1999 to begin my term in 2000, and the reason that I ran for a second term, was because I love this community. I was raised in this community. I've stayed in this community, and my wife and I intend to stay here for many, many years. And I think that the purpose of sitting on the City Council, or a Board of Supervisors, or for that matter, any board or commission that the city appoints, planning and zoning and otherwise, are appointed for the purpose of doing better, of creating betterment for our community. So I don't have any particular agenda of particular items that I would like to see accomplished. As I said before, I think we're in the service business. I think we need to continue to provide for a safe and secure community, promote economic development, and promote quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all today, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go to consent agenda, which is items three through 16J. You can assume that they pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, as I'm reading it, please come forward and state your name and address so it can be used for the record. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns at the end. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of Council Minutes of January 9, 2017. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions of January 10, 2017. Five is a resolution setting the date for public hearing for the annual plan for the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. Construction of West 7th Street, Hamilton Boulevard to Wesley Parkway Reconstruction Project. Seven are resolutions accepting the work of concrete specialty for construction of the I-29 Segment 2 Wesley Parkway Sewer Project, and I'll move we defer that for two weeks.
Second.
I know you think I don't have a rule.
Yes.
Okay. We don't meet next week.
Right. Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Aye. A is a resolution approving and accepting the Economic Regions Development Initiative Grant Agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority. B is a resolution approving the application for the Iowa Department of Transportation FY 2018 Federal Aid Highway Rail Crossing Safety Program. C is a resolution supporting the submit of a grant application by the ART Association to enhance Iowa. Nine are civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution fixing a date for the hearing on the proposed civil penalty of 300 against Sarge's Minmart, 2329 West 2nd Street for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. B is a resolution fixing a date for a hearing on the proposed civil penalty of $1,500 or a 30-day suspension of the cigarette permit issued to Walmart, 3101 Floyd Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. How many, how many would that be to get a $1,500 fine?
Three.
Three, isn't it?
What happens if you get four?
Additional fine and additional suspension. It's a graduated scale.
Think they could lose their license for 30 days.
Well, there's, that'd be a certain point where we say, you maybe shouldn't sell if you can't figure out.
What's, what's the second offense, Nicole? Do you know? Is that a thousand?
Pull that up. No. First is $300, second?
Five hundred.
I was thinking it was 300, 1,500, and then six months.
The amount of cigarettes you sell to Walmart is, yeah. They do that in half a day.
The fine's just as bad when it comes to liquor.
I can tell you and just, it's a graduated scale. Bring it up and tell as soon as I have it.
But it's a concern when you've got three in a row that are already under third offense. C is a resolution fixing a date for a hearing and a proposed civil penalty of $1,500 or a 30-day suspension for a cigarette permit issued to Work and Church, 215 4th Street for violation of the Iowa liquor laws, cigarette laws. D is a resolution fixing the date for a hearing on a proposed civil penalty of $1,500 and a 30-day suspension of a cigarette permit issued to Come and Go, 1821 Hamilton Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. E is a resolution assessing a civil penalty for $500 against a cancel Castle Pub and Grill, 4400 Singing Hills Boulevard for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. Ten are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving the contract and performance bond with L&amp;L Builders Company for the Riverside Pool Improvement Project. B is a resolution approving an amendment, number one, to the Consulting Services Agreement with DJR for the addition of the Storm Sewer Design and Inspection Services in connection with the City Fuel Island Project. C is a resolution approving a payment assistance agreement with Roseanne Plant. D is a resolution approving a targeted jobs withholding tax credit program withholding agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Agreement and Beth Bruning, PC. E is a resolution authorizing and approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with Beth Bruning, PC. F is a resolution approving a targeted jobs withholding tax credit withholding agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority and TMS Inc. and KV LLC.
And if I can jump in real quick and answer the cigarette question. As a scaled penalty, first violation's $300, second violation within two years is 1,500 or a 30-day suspension. Third violation within three years is $1,500 and a 30-day suspension. Fourth violation within three years is $1,500 and a 60-day suspension. Fifth violation within four years, the retail permit shall be revoked.
G is a resolution approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with TMS Inc. and KV LLC.
Mayor?
Yes.
On both 10, E, and G, the, the minimum assessment agreement, is that for, the minimum assessments for 10 years, but the rebates for five, is that correct? Five-year period on each one?
Yes.
Is that what we're doing, Chris, is it's five years on?
Yeah.
Yeah. On both of those?
Chris, that minimum, minimum assessment. Yeah, exactly.
That, okay. Thank you.
Eleven are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the Position Classification Manual for Ask Me, Fire Local. Wait a minute, it can't be Ask Me and Fire Local.
That's my mistake, man.
It'd be Ask. This would be Fire Local, but it's number seven, right?
I think that's where I got it.
Your union's number seven, right, chief, if you're here?
Mm-hmm.
It should say Local Fire, Fire Local Number Seven.
I'm sorry. I condensed it down too far. I was in quite a rush. I apologize.
That's okay. I just knew it couldn't be Ask Me. I didn't, they hadn't merged. But B is a resolution amending the Fire Department's FY 2017 for authorized payroll complement by reclassifying the Assistant Chief, Fire Chief to Fire Captain. Twelve are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving a settlement of the Goodyear, Goodyear Work Comp Claim and authorizing payment. B is a resolution approving accrued payments awarded in arbitration for the Sands Workers' Comp Claims. C is a resolution approving change order number three, accepting the work and authorizing the final payment to INA Construction LP for the 2016 Annual Storm Inlet Rebuild Project. D is a resolution approving change orders number one and two, accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Knife River Midwest LLC for the 2016 Annual Resurfacing Project. Thirteen are purchasing. A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Taggart's Powersports for the purchase of two 2016 Polaris Ranger 800 six-by-six all-terrain vehicles.
I have a question on that. Just curious why we, why we did Taggart's over Polaris? There's only $350 difference in price, so, and Polaris is in town and Taggart's is out of town, so.
Taggart's was the low bid, so that was the recommendation.
What's that?
Taggart's was the low bid, so that was.
They have to recommend the lowest bid.
Recommendation.
Okay, so what's the difference in the, in the two vehicles? I guess maybe that's what I'm asking. Because maybe we could change it if there's a difference, and it's a bitter difference.
I agree. All of the things being equal, I'd prefer to buy local council member, Capron, but in this particular case, I noted some things in the specifications for the local bid that I don't believe met specifications.
Okay.
Three things. One was the minimum cargo bed dimensions. They claim that they met that, but if you go onto the site and review the product, that they actually, the measurements don't mesh. And so basically, we're thinking that they, they mean that they're meeting it with the tailboard down. We asked for a parking brake, and it states that the park position is in the gearbox, which is not a separate parking brake. And then the cargo bed capacity meets the minimum rating with overloads installed, which makes me wonder how the vehicle's gonna handle with the extra weight. So particularly the first two, I don't think are, make me quite. So particularly the first two, I don't think are, make me question the specs, but in this particular case. I know Purchasing did a great job of trying to get multiple bids on this.
You were questioning specs in which model? Or which?
Polaris.
Are they both Polaris?
No.
No. Oh, I got it. The Polaris you were questioning?
No.
No, the other one?
Right.
Okay. Got it.
And we just went with the...
Because otherwise it's...
Because that's what we're supposed to do for you.
Otherwise, it is within the 2%.
Right. And you had 10, you put out 10 bids, and you've only got two back?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, we received others that didn't meet specs.
There was a third one that did not meet specs.
Okay. Okay.
One is a 6x6, one is a four-wheel, one has six wheels, so it has a heavier cargo rating and all that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
10A and move, because even the memo reads Ask Me and move that we amend that to read Fire Local Number Seven, International Association of Firefighters, and drop the class, and drop the Ask Me Fire Local out of 212 out of that completely, and I'll move that.
Second.
Good thing you and I were here today.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I'll need to...
I'll call the vote on the amendment. Capron?
What's that?
Didn't know about.
Seventh, Union.
Seventh. Firefighter Union in the United States.
United States. I probably heard of it.
That's the way it's local seven.
That's why it's local seven. And Miranda, she asked for your vote.
Oh, sure. I'm there. Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
B is... Are we still on 13A?
Yes.
I'm curious. The chief said the specs didn't meet in the, in the second, or the one from Sioux City, Yamaha. How come we didn't throw that out right away?
Purchasing threw out the first one, and this was, I reviewed this later in the process, and I just questioned. They write down, for example, under Parking Brake, it doesn't say yes meets specs, it's Park Position in Gearbox. The Minimum Cargo Bed Dimensions reads yes, as it met spec. So again, Purchasing would have said yes, it met. As I looked into this a little bit further, I realized that it couldn't meet specs without, for example, the tailgate down. So it was just me getting involved later in the process, so...
And you're willing to argue that?
I'm willing to argue that.
Okay.
Like I said, I'd love to go local every chance I get.
Okay.
In this particular case, I don't think they meet.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to High State Truck Center for the purchase of a sewer jet truck for the central maintenance garage. Fourteen's approved checks issued for the reporting period of December 2016 in an amount of $12,489,815.57. Fifteen's applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have questions. Sixteen's receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items, please come forward at this time. Okay. Seeing none, we'll vote.
Call the vote.
Oh, you're gonna call it? Okay.
Yes, we're not gonna use the voting panel tonight. Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Thank you.
Recommendations of Planning and Zoning. Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance vacating the east-west alley adjacent to 607 and 615 Pearl Street. Petitioner, HCI Real Estate, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of this item.
Second.
You need to move it.
I thought you moved it.
No, I didn't move it. I was waiting for... So I think I read the vote. What was the vote on this?
The vote was four to zero, in favor.
You have seven members of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
We do.
And I realize that not everyone's as diligent as this council to get to their meetings like we are, but you rarely have a full board anymore. It's normally 5-0, 7-0, so do we have one or two people that are not...
This last winter has been challenging with trying to get all members there. Fortunately, we have not missed any meetings because of a lack of form recently.
But we have, we have an ordinance that says if you don't, if you miss so many, we are gonna...
I don't think there's anyone in particular that has continued to miss numerous meetings. I think it's just that there was multiple conflicts this last winter, which unfortunately, we lost a few of the members for some of the meetings, but again, we've been able to hold all the meetings so far.
I understand that, but I would like to know their attendance record for the 2016, because I, this is, this is, in my opinion, some days even more important than city council. One of, because Mr. Moore served there for a long time, and I respect his opinion so much because of that time and tenure there. But you'd have to agree, this is probably a very important board, and so attendance to me on this one, when I see 5-0, 4-0s, is a little bit of a concern, even though they come back 4-0. So I guess I would personally like to see their attendance records.
We can get that to you.
I think you've had many meetings where there's been one member. I remember the 6-0 votes, but, or a split vote with six members, but that was probably unusual. I hope that was unusual, that you only had four.
This last winter, we've had some of these four and five.
Yeah, you've had some five and fours the last few times. We have a motion to second, correct? Anyone to be heard?
No, there was...
Did you get a motion?
No. There was no motion.
Rhonda made the motion, now second it. Okay.
Okay.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Thank you.
Not trying to be negative, but I really, I really question why this alley has to be closed. That alley still serves the transportation needs. And I'm not trying to not be cooperative with Ho-Chunk, but why do you guys not think that's necessary?
Ho-Chunk does own the adjacent properties to this alley. If you recall, this alley and this block were recently reconstructed as part of the historic Pearl Alley reconstruction. We did send out the required notifications. We did get one call from a property owner within the block asking questions and was not in support nor in opposition of it. And so we normally base our recommendation on the notifications and any responses in favor or against. In this case, we didn't receive either. We understand that Ho-Chunk wants to utilize this alley with the redevelopment of both those properties on each side, on the north and the south. Therefore, we supported the alley vacation as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. It doesn't mean that I think just the general traffic uses that, but I think what they use it for more is for cut-through traffic versus actually accessing those properties within that block. And so it was decided at that time to go ahead and vacate it and make that recommendation to the council.
The north-south alley here is closed at the museum.
Correct.
East-west to the west of this, is it closed?
It is not closed, and so this will create an L-shaped alley through the block. So you have the south leg and the west leg still.
I got a call from, I'm sure, the same guy, and I'm not sure he characterized it exactly right that he's not, was for this. His characterization to me was colorfully said that he didn't believe that there was any reason this had to be closed.
We might have had a similar conversation with that individual.
Okay. Because I didn't want you to, this council to believe that...
But he did not leave the conversation with either support or opposition.
Chris Matt, senior planner. We did also receive a letter in support from the Children's Museum for the closure of the alley.
Well, I'm sure you did. But that, if it affects somebody negatively, they're gonna write the letter. If it doesn't affect them, they're, I mean, they're, you know, I don't know. And the problem is, this guy has a business that he has to be terribly careful. I just...
Historically, if you had one owner or a tenant that said, "I use that alley for access to my property," you would have recommended, I would assume that P&amp;Z would have...
No, then this one, they would have said, "You can drive down the other alley and still get into your property," is what they would have said. That's what they did say.
Normally, if we have a user or multiple users using that that are not adjacent to it, you know, we weigh those, those factors. If there's other means of egress into the property, we would look at that. In this case, I think that portion of the alley is used more from just the general traffic going from one block to the next, and it's easier to cut through there. I don't think they're actually accessing any of those businesses within that block through that alley.
No, he goes south there.
I was gonna say, they're, I don't know the business you're making reference to, but they're not adjacent to that alley. So it's really the property that is owned south of the alley there that has the big need, I guess, to use that for their development.
But it'd be like the fire station, it'd be like the fire station, Pete. They tried to buy, if you remember, they tried to buy the house to the south, to the north of my alley.
Okay.
Because they wanted for parking. So if they were to buy that, and they'd say, "Well, we're next, we're next here, and Bob will still have access to come in from the street side the other way," I'd fight you like crazy on that, because lots of my clients come down that alley, and they'll say, "Well, they shouldn't, they should go down the street," but that's what alleys are for.
So we're vacating the alley?
The owner on either side of this?
Okay, so Ho-Chunk is gonna buy it, so we're gonna vacate it for them. Is that what you're saying?
They're the applicant, correct.
Right, okay.
Where are we at? Did everybody vote already?
No, we're waiting on your vote.
I'll vote, I'll vote aye.
And Capron?
Aye.
I'm, I'm gonna, I would like everybody to not do the statutory rule when it's, are they desperate to have it?
No, I don't think timing is an issue. They're working on the redevelopment of both those buildings, both 615 Pearl and the former International Market Building. I think they can wait a couple of weeks for the approval. It's our understanding that they intend to use that alley as part of the redevelopment for potential common space for the redevelopment of those two buildings.
So how are they gonna do that? We have to have utilities running down that, don't we?
There's some utilities in there. Obviously, we would remain easements over top of those. They can use it for public outdoor seating and that type of use. They would not be able to put any structures over top of the utilities.
Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning property lying on the east side of Tiger Drive, between Nicholas and Tiger Drive, northerly terminus, from zone classification NC-2 to zone classification NC-4. Petitioner, properties, the planning and zoning recommends approval of this item.
There was, there was no, no one came to speak against or in favor of this item other than the people who were actually involved in the development. There was no controversy about it.
I'll move it.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Second, third?
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Hearings, hearing, and a resolution approving the sublease of a portion of space located at 4647 Stone Avenue to Senate Inc. I'll move it.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Twenty's a hearing and resolution approving plus plans and specifications for the construction of the 2017 Leeds Park Splash Pad Project. I'll move it.
Second.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Twenty-one's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of LG Everest Inc. for the Storm Sewer Easement for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Twenty-two's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of HCI Company for the purchase of certain land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area and authorizing development agreements and minimum assessment agreements deferred from December 19, 2016, January 19, 2017, and request to move till March 6, 2017. I'll move that.
Second.
Well, how come it's being deferred so much?
Renee Billings, Economic Development. We've been working with Ho-Chunk for quite a while on these projects. They have two industrial buildings that they are conduing. They're doing condo units in them, which require a horizontal regime, which is a very complex legal documentation, which is taking longer than expected. So we've extended it a little farther out this time in hopes that it will be completed by the March 6 meeting. Development agreement and everything is, the terms are okay, it's just that document is taking longer than expected.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
They had Daniel Moore Esquire, they would probably have it done by now.
That's true, Bob. That's true, Dan.
Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Twenty-three's a resolution authorizing approving a development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with HCI Real Estate Company deferred from December 19, 2016, January 9, 2017. I'll move it.
Second.
Capron?
That's pretty good, Keith.
Aye. How was that? He said... Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Presentation of the Mayor's Youth Commission on its 2016 accomplishments.
This is one of my all-time favorite presentations, Mayor. I look forward to this.
Well, we're gonna get it up. I should have done this a little bit earlier.
Dan gets giddy over this. This is really good.
I do. I'd like to meet the mayor and the finance director.
Mayor Pro Tem.[1584.88]
Mayor Pro Tem.
Well, he should, if he really wanted to meet you, he should've been here the other night when we saw you in, shouldn't he? Where were you?
When was that?
About a month ago. It was a cold night, as I remember.
You have a meeting tonight, correct?
We have a meeting tonight.
Other one tonight.
And I can't be there tonight because I'll be at the Mount Zion.
You could, I'm coming here, so tell them at Mount Zion, I'll be late.
Okay.
She just come in?
Your meeting's at seven o'clock tonight?
Mm-hmm. Nope, I think we're good.
Yes.
I just need to get the username in there and then...
I still look forward to this, I really do. Even though I wasn't there a month ago. And none of us may be on the bus on Wednesday, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it still eight to 10 inches they're predicting, do you guys know?
Are we going Wednesday?
Pardon? Six to eight tomorrow?
Wow, you guys need updated stuff here.
Geez, a tear.
Is this part of the capital budget?
Our people aren't talking to us.
Uh, we did put a little money in for the new electronic voting system, didn't we, the other day, Bob?
You directed us to look into it, yes.
Not a real high priority for you, huh?
Not accepting your...
As a Saturday treat.
Very slow.
Welcome.
Who's the computer bureau? Lisa, can't we get a new computer there, as cheap as?
I'm not an IT person, I'll tell you, but I'll... We got it, it's, it's...
You know who to call, though.
It's coming, we know how to do it. We got it.
All right, we got it.
We do this all the time.
A lot of high-priced telephones are ready to go. Lisa's daughter is an IT specialist. Really good.
Oh, she is.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, she's good.
That doesn't mean that it rubs off.
No, I understand. I understand. I'm just saying she does a great job.
You think I call when I get in trouble? It's F. It's F.
Very patient.
We're good with technical difficulties.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you here.
You gotta love when the fire puts out a deal about how they're getting ready and they use a police picture.
He uses a what?
Yeah.
Police picture.
I was trying to figure out who that was, but I finally figured it out.
Guess they haven't looked at mine yet, Bob.
It's not very philandering of them. They did that because Pete keeps saying they're putting their lives on the line now, so... Boy, you just don't ever forget anything.
Remember that.
Oh, I'll be hearing about it for 10 years to come.
Holy cow.
Favorite.
Ready for us?
You bet.
Okay, go.
All right, hi, I'm Libby Markham. I'm a junior at Bishop Healan and I'm the current Mayor Pro Tem for the Mayor's Youth Commission.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yep. Uh, the mission of the Mayor's Youth Commission is to explore, communicate, and provide for the needs, problems, issues, and activities affecting the city's youth. Here are the goals. Madeline Bertram served as mayor in 2016 and Taven Schmal served as Mayor Pro Tem. And the rest of the executive council is listed right there.
You even have a legal director.
Mm-hmm. Somebody has to keep order.
Hi.
Awesome, Mayor.
I'm Burton Abrams. I'm a sophomore at Sioux City East High. I'm just an executive council member. The executive council coordinated activities for its 153 members, active members of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission and 40 young ambassadors with the help of Suland Cares, who coordinated the eight adult advisors. Participating high school students were from the following schools: Bishop Healan, East, North. Members of the Sioux City Mayor's Youth Commission contributed 4,392 hours back to the Suland community through planning, meetings, and community service, nearly 29 hours per active member. We have also raised $544.95 for African-American, African orphanage project to support children at BB's Hope Orphanage. Members also donated 100 toys for the women and children shelters, coordinated by the young ambassador, Devaney Spadell. Members of Youth Commission volunteered at 48 different activities, which you can see here. In cooperation with Suland Cares, the Jackson Recovery Centers, Sioux City Police Department, Juvenile Court Service, and the Suland District Health Department held a town hall meeting on underage drinking for 216 adults and youth in April.
I'm Alexis Hunley. I go to North High and I'm a junior and I'm also a member of NYC Exec Council. NYC held press conferences to announce the completion of Little Free Library Project. NYC also coordinated events with Suland Cares Elks Club for Red Ribbon Night, scheduled on October 24th, held in City Hall Lobby. Also planted red tulips during the week in cooperation with Suland Cares. NYC members served as greeters and timers for the local Iowa State Representatives Coordinator Debate Forum on October 11th and Woodbury County Auditor Supervisors Candidates Debate Forum on October 17th.
Hi, I'm Peyton Von Yay and I'm a junior at West High School and I am the current marketing director. I'm gonna tell you about a couple of NYC's other accomplishments. We worked with Bear Cliff University and ACTUS team to form our enhanced BSA groups in Sioux City schools. Each group was offered a 250 grant from Suland Cares BSA program and is sponsored by the United Way of Sealand. Also, the commission administered the Sioux City Young Ambassador Program and coordinated a young ambassador recognition event for 45 students in grades four through seven in May. We also coordinated efforts to raise $4,500 for the new Grand View Park Disc Golf Course and assisted with grand opening event on October 11th.
Hello, my name is Taven Schmal. I am a junior at West High School and I am the current mayor. At full meetings, Mayor's Youth Commission members, young ambassadors, and parents heard presentations from the people above. And Suland Cares facilitates the activities of the Youth Commission and coordinates its adult advisors. The Sioux City Police Department is the liaison between Suland Cares and the Youth Commission. And we would like to thank our adult advisors that helped keep everything in order and helped everything to run smooth, and they are listed above. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, yeah, I have a couple of questions. We have South, not that I care, but we have South Sioux kids on our, on our Mayor's Youth...
If they live in South Sioux, but actually go to school in Sioux City.
Oh, okay.
There's three requirements. They either have to be homeschooled in Sioux City, they have to live in Sioux City, or they can, we've got kids from Lawton and other places as well, as long as they go to a school here. And if they wanna do an adjustment, if they don't have a Youth Commission where they're at and they wanna be on ours, we've had some kids come over as well.
Suland Christian School doesn't have anybody on here anymore?
Not this year. Some years they do and some years they don't.
And homeschoolers don't have any?
We don't have anybody this year.
But you have in the past?
Have in the past.
Okay, thank you.
How many do you have total?
This year, last year. Last year, we had 180, 193 total. That includes young ambassadors and members. We do suspend them if they have not fulfilled the requirements. We do suspend them and I think we suspended, you know, up to 20 last year.
Yeah, I've heard that.
So this year, we're going to have, I think, 186.
Wow, that's awesome.
We start tonight with a new member orientation.
You know, they do such a great job and they, they're such a good volunteer part of the community that, um, it's impressive. It's really impressive and we appreciate it.
And I would agree, on behalf of the council certainly and to the executive council, right? Thank you for everything you do and I know your predecessors from '16, they're not here, are they?
Some of them are.
Some of them are?
Some of them, sir.
There's three of them there that were from last year.
Maybe the most impressive statistic to me is the almost 4,400 hours of volunteer work within the community, which is just absolutely fabulous. If you put a dollar amount to that, that would be huge. But more importantly than the dollar amount, the fact that you're active and you're involved. Trust me when I tell you now, you may not see it, but I think you do because you've hung out and done a great job. The more you get involved in your community, wherever you end up, and we hope it's Sioux City, but wherever you end up, that vested interest will, and the work that you have done this year and, or will do this year and last year is just tremendous. So again, from me and I'm sure the others on the council and the city of Sioux City, that, thank you very much for all you do and, and I think you could probably beat the 4,400 hours from '16 and '17 and it's, it's great to have you here and doing the things that you do. So thank you very much.
We had about an average of about a, what's the fire code in here?
The occupancy rating?
I wanna, I wanna be one under that. But we had an average of about 100 students come to every one of our meetings this year, so it was great.
If the fire department worries about that, they probably need to find something else to do.
In addition to the comments that have been made, I also want to add that it's unbelievably good for this community that you think outside the box and you initiate different programs and you don't say, "That will never fly" or "That can't be done." You look at it and you say, "It can be done. How can we get this passed? How can we present it to council to have council adopt it and pass it?" And so you're to be congratulated for that. You never give up and I really appreciate that. And I think your adult leaders are awesome as well to pull you all together, to give you that energy to help you with the positive environment that you have being a member of the Mayor's Youth Commission. I think you guys and gals just absolutely rock. I think you're awesome and I really appreciate all that you do in this community.
I would guess that you have our support. We really, really do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, citizen concerns. Any citizens want to be heard? Seeing none, we'll go to council. I have nothing to add.
Oh, Pete. I always, I always come on Pete to say something. Oh.
Doesn't mean you have to.
I know it.
Just throwing that out there.
Well, Gus, I'm gonna pass too.
Okay, that's too bad.
That's too bad.
I'm sure Dan won't, but go ahead, Dan.
Well, just a couple of things. I have to mention this and I forgot to bring the paper with me, but the 25-year column in the Sioux City Journal featured the mayor 25 years ago, the picture of you, anyway. I didn't feature it.
That was like two or three weeks ago.
Yeah.
No, no.
No, just Sunday. Yesterday.
There was another one?
Yeah, another one.
It was last Sunday.
It was a good one.
And I'm not gonna tell you what the comment was, but I had the, see, I, that's why I know I'm not 63 because I had the same thoughts that your grandson had about that picture. Exactly. And how old is he?
Two. The one before, my, my daughter sent me a video, whatever, on the phone that said, "Papa, hair, hair."
That was 25 years ago.
Where? She's, no, he meant where.
Just a reminder, not to compete with the Mayor's Youth Commission because I would get beat every time, but there is tonight at 7 o'clock Celebration of Dr. King at Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church, starts at 7 o'clock and it's a community celebration, remembrance, and honor and hope all of you can attend that aren't here attending in your already committed evening. It's been a postponement actually from last week when it was to take place on the 16th and we, we were iced out, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Carney, you want to tell them what a snow emergency means today?
Dave Carney, Public Works, yes. We recommended and the mayor declared a snow emergency, which will start tomorrow at 7:00 AM, which restricts parking on our emergency snow routes and also restricts parking to odd even. Tomorrow will be an even day of the week, so we will be looking that everyone should be, if they, if they can't get their cars off-street, that they should be parked on the even side of the street, starting at 7:00 AM.
On all streets?
On all streets.
Snow emergency routes for?
Snow emergency routes will be no parking.
Snow emergency routes?
Those are marked with the blue, the blue signs and snowflakes.
And how long do I? That's mostly in the downtown area, right?
Correct.
How long do I keep my vehicle parked on the even-numbered side of the street?
Till 7:00 AM the next day.
To when?
Till, till either the snow emergency is lifted or 7:00 AM the next day, then it needs to be moved to the odd side.
If in my own good judgment, I think that side has been cleared, can I move it back?
No.
No.
Or get towed.
If in my own good judgment, if I feel like it's been too long, can I move it back?
No.
And what am I going to get if I don't move it at all?
You're gonna get towed.
Yeah.
A $30 citation and/or towed.
He's getting towed. He needs to set an example for the rest of the...
I'm trying to think of what other questions might come up. So it's even side number, even numbered?
If tomorrow's an even day, it'll be even side of the streets.
Even though there might not, even though there might be no parking posted?
No, if it's no parking, that they are not to park, you cannot violate a no parking.
You can't?
No.
Even under a snow emergency, you can't violate the no parking?
The old ordinance read that way. We removed that from the ordinance.
Where, where should I move my vehicle?
They'll have to park on an adjacent block.
That's, but I'll be taking somebody else's parking spot on an adjacent block. Is that okay? If it's available, if it's open?
If it's available, it's open to the public.
That, that really is an important note that Mr. Moore brings out in his, in the, in the great way that he does that. But you cannot park where the signs prohibit parking. So a lot of people might be getting confused because they think they can, but you just don't want to go there.
Can I park on the parking? The part between the sidewalk and the curb?
No, that is prohibited.
You never can do that. That's always against the law.
Why'd you park in your?
Why's the statute of limitations run on that?
Dan, you have a garage. Why'd you park in your garage?
He's asking for all the other citizens.
I know he is. I'm just...
You want to go back to the recycle bins once ones are on a roll or are you gonna let that go to the? They are going well.
Hey, yeah.
They're what?
The glass is going well.
Is it?
Yeah.
Is the glass going well?
Wow.
I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot.
I have no idea how the glass is going.
Yeah, I stuck my head in one up at Fairway on the north side. They're doing real well.
Wow, that's good to know.
Well, I hope glass is being taken to the seven centers that we have. I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor. Because no longer can you put them in our free bins, recycling bins.
Any other questions about snow emergencies?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're talking about snow. Thank you for answering those questions.
Not a problem.
Anything?
You know, if you would have...
Anything, ladies? Move, adjourn?
Back in there.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Aye.
Aye. As you know, in the old days, we used to pull up to the... The kids today wouldn't know that there were phones.
You know, back in the day, I used to hear about the two...
We'll leave it on. We're coming back in an hour. Okay.